It says it's starting, but it got a spinny wheel.
Is it? I think, do you have your extender here?
We're live.
We're live, hey.
Welcome.
I see a blue light. Is that a blue light? No, blue light, just me going, I guess.
I think the blue light just turns on on this camera when it's getting any kind of power.
Okay.
I think. Anyway, we're live.
All right. So we'll go ahead and start, and we start with our pledges to the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
That's the ladder we pulled out so we could put the star on top of the tree for the art department. We haven't pulled them too. Yes, it's the one we used to use to get up on top of the
I remember.
in the storage space, and we hadn't climbed up there for a while, so. It's like, yeah, it's kind of, it's pretty shaky, but. All right, if we can have a roll call.
All right, Commissioner Ignatius.
Here.
Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Mayor Noe.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ooh, right. So. Go to announcements, which, oh, which report? And announcements. If anybody wants check report. The only, let's see, oh, I have one thing I need to ask you about. There was an item on here about, is the one with the question, was V I S, Microsoft, twenty-one thirty-one? And there was more to the description, but I'm not sure what that is. I'm not sure. It was a, it seems to, it was a debit card. Did you purchase anything that?
The OneDrive, you know, I was saying, because the backing up the computer.
Uh huh. I bet it was, I bet it was.
I think that's the only thing I've.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look. Yeah, Microsoft, that, it, it seems like cloud storage.
Microsoft is a, or OneDrive is a Microsoft thing.
Okay. Yeah, because it was something that we were, we had run out of room.
Yeah, it wasn't backing up, and it was saying that the subscription had subscribed, uh, expired.
Mm-hmm.
And we were like, oh, you just need to.
Yeah.
But it wasn't telling me like what subscription we had before.
Yeah.
So I think I just went for the cheapest one that they were doing.
And I think we looked it over and it was legit. I'm getting emails. If you look in the Kingsbury email, there's several things about our SAM account expiring. SAM is the system for award management, which is any grant funds or anything, you have to have a SAM of anything you're awarded. And that, I clicked on one and it said, oh, yeah, for three forty-nine. I'm like, no, we don't. Yeah, and so I went into the website and, yeah, our, our, our account is until February, end of February next year. So it's just, you know, stuff coming through. So you always have to be careful in there. You know, insert credit card. So, but I think, so that, I think we did look at that and it was, it was real, because we were already getting the cloud storage pool. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, other things on here, let's see, we got the sales and use tax deposit, twenty-seven eighty-four. A little bit less than what it usually is, but still, still healthy. The other thing that's new on here is the last item on the Broadway Bank checking, which is the, from the Texas Controller Public Accounts. This is our mixed beverage taxes.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be from Big Easy? I couldn't remember the name. Yeah, I couldn't remember the name. Yeah, Big Easy, because they are now have liquor, and so anything with ice or soda, whatever setups, I believe, is, is what gets included in this. It's the mixed beverage. So I looked where, I looked at all the cities that got mixed beverage sales tax receipts. And so we're a little, we got ten, fifteen dollars more than Aransas Pass, and like ten dollars less than Martinville. So we're, I, I know. So it's never a whole lot of money, but it's, you know, it's a little, it's a little something, so, and it's something that we did, we are due, so. That is, should start coming in now because they're similar to sale and use tax. It is two months delayed. So this was for October, which means it was reported in November, and then it was distributed in December. And of course, our T M L membership came out this month. The, our compensation to the Kingsbury V F D also came out this month. All right? Any questions or comments? On that, um, I will need, I need to make sure, there's something else, um, blah, uh, okay, uh, I was just making sure I wasn't jumping ahead to something. As far, we don't have it on the item, so just an announcement. I did write to the adjoining property owners of Summit Street and, and included a letter in a self-addressed envelope for explaining what we're trying to do, that this unimproved paper street, nonexistent paper street, we're trying to take ownership, as the city of Kingsbury are trying to take ownership of that, that property. And I included a letter that they would sign to say that they have no interest in this piece of property or paying interest, or paying taxes on it, or or getting it surveyed, which is similar to letters that, that have accompanied. So this is part of the process in, to get the okay from the neighboring property owners. And I would have mailed them out, but I have run out of stamps. So I was asking Jessica if we had stamps here. No, we do not have stamps. So I will get those out as soon as I get, get the stamps for that. We need to make sure we have some, get a roll, something here, so.
Where was that property at? Summit?
Yeah, you know where Summit Street is? So the, the first road across the tracks is Railway Street. The next road is Guadalupe Street.
To the left?
Yes. And then there's Summit Street to the left.
Okay.
Well, Guadalupe and Summit both have on paper, uh, streets that go to the right, but they were never created.
How large is that property?
Oh, oh, it's not, it's.
Like sixty by?
Size of this building, maybe?
Yeah, it may be the size of this room.
That is interesting for my reporting, which is very interesting.
Oh, good. Yeah, it's about the size of this room. Yeah, it's, and there's four adjoining property owners for that. And I don't know that we would necessarily need to get their approval to take ownership of it, but it's the right thing to do, to, to make sure. Whether, yeah, it's just the right thing to do. Now, there's also about half the size of this room is Guadalupe Street, but there are people that use that to access their properties, though. But nobody, nobody uses the, it's got three beautiful oak trees growing in it. It's not, it is not used by any of the adjoining property owners. Are you? Okay, yes. It shows that it goes back, and there's even another street that goes north-south back there, and there's streets all over the place that were never actually created.
Was it Guadalupe that originally was platted to go all the way across to Gander Street?
Uh, no, railway.
Railway, okay, that's railway.
Railway, yeah. Railway shows going all the way over to Gander Street. That's why sometimes you see the eighteen-wheelers going down that way when there's a track.
It is perfect property for our idea, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, like I said, I included the letter in a self-addressed stamped envelope. And that's where I ran out of stamps, so I don't have stamps in the actual envelopes. I just wanted to include that.
They have, it has a, a number to call, give that first.
Yes, absolutely. If any, I can read you the letter?
No.
Okay. If, just basically, if you have any questions or concerns, you know, give me a call. And it's just saying that we would, that the city of Kingsbury is looking to take ownership of this paper street, and it's just one of them, one of several streets that were on the original plat in eighteen seventy-five that never actually were created. So in order to take ownership, part of the process would be getting adjacent property owners to, to say that they don't have any interest in paying any property taxes on it. Any other announcements?
Yes, so Habitable Spaces is having its end of the year celebration, Full Moon, which happens to be on December twenty-sixth, Boxing Day after Christmas. We are burning a humongous ham for it. We're gonna do stuffed quail, bread, cheese. We're asking people to bring a dish, if they like, dessert or salad or something. And everybody is invited. Mayor Shirley will be our keynote speaker. And we're gonna be kind of talking about Habitable Spaces' achievements through the years and looking forward, because we're getting a shop, kind of, we're trying to make the last push to get it finished, so that we can offer classes to the public and offer, I mean, Frank has seen what we've done in, in our, you know, skeletary form, but we want to do, we want to do art classes in the workshop, and we want to do culinary classes in the commercial kitchen, and we want to open up the commercial kitchen for farmers to really use. So it'll be kind of a launching of all that, and, yeah, so I invite everyone.
It is part of a donation drive also, right?
Yeah, donation and membership drive. We're asking people to, you know, donate at least twenty dollars, but we'll have raffle baskets, and we'll have cool things to auction off, and, yeah, and we're gonna have art games. And the city clerk is going to be, is gonna have a profile, an artist profile, video profile that she's doing, and we're also gonna have an artist lecture by artist Chris Soder, who teaches at U T S A in San Antonio. So, yeah, it'll be a full night of festivities and feasting and, yeah, delicious food.
Excellent. I'm looking for it.
Come on out. And there's information on our website.
Yeah, last couple of things down at the, at the farm I haven't been able to go, so.
Yeah, yeah, and so now, yeah, I mean, we're gonna post a quorum, so, and we'll try to get.
Hopefully Frank can come with his lovely wife.
He'll work on it.
Yeah, cool.
Uh, any other announcements?
I don't have any announcements. I think I'm gonna save it for public comments.
Okay.
If I can.
All right. Uh, all right, item number two, public comments or discussion. Anything to discuss that's not already on the agenda?
Okay, I have a request and a concern about, I've been looking at the Open Meetings Act and our, what is it called now?
Kingsbury Development.
Kingsbury Development. Is, is definitely, well, the planning and zoning definitely was, I guess this one is too, because we are on the committee also. It's, it's something that requires the open meetings followed strictly.
And we had kind of questions about that.
But I'm, I'm, you might find a judge would say, no, because of this, there's one case where it's like unquestionable, but.
So no more private email, no more emails off of?
The email, the text.
Yep.
And I was saying, I don't want to, I'd like to circumvent that, not circumvent it, to hide it, but I'd like to, I was gonna ask Sam.
Reduce the overhead that we have.
Yeah, I'd like to be able, well, because the only option would be to use that message board. And that, to me, is very.
It's so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's so annoying.
And, and.
Yeah, is there no way of doing an open, like, emails that are somehow?
You know, I was gonna say, ask them if we could.
If you have to go through the cityofkingsbury dot org thing, because I'm a committee member and not a city member, I could still use my private email, technically, even though I'm a volunteer and, yeah.
I mean, you can.
I can send things to the gov.
It was like everybody on the committee, including us, and I was real hesitant to get in a conversation with anybody. And I was kind of like directing my answers or replies to you, you know, or make it sound like it's to you, not to everybody. If it was to everybody, I just put information, like I said, I put it on the message board, information on a subject line in F Y I, and just information, I'm sending everybody. Because I couldn't, it wouldn't publish, it's too big to post.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's another issue, that's also the limitation.
Yeah, so, I mean, I still have the files. If I ask, if I can produce it, and it's, you know, it's open, it's, it was all public documents anyway. But it'd be nice if we use the email, but like I said, build a file with just emailed and stored, say they're available if you want. But I don't know if that would.
Because committee members don't have kingsbury dot org email handles, because we're not. Is that what you're saying? Only, only the commissioners and the mayor and secretary have that, and the, and the city attorney has that. We don't, we don't have those.
Does that really affect this, though? I mean.
You can access it, can't you?
I don't have a password or.
Oh, no, no. Oh, I know, but you could, you can email it, you can use it, I can email it.
What do you mean? I could send things to it, but I wish it would just be an empty void, or I'm concerned.
Yeah, I don't know if there's.
I don't know.
There may be something to research. I mean, the, the message boards are used, you know, and they're, you know, kind of cumbersome. They're not.
Yeah, well, email can be cumbersome, too, so.
Not nearly as bad as message.
Yeah, message board. The thing about message boards is emails.
I could put all the many minutes or images all uploaded in there. I'm on, I'm trying to stay on top of it.
Yeah.
We're okay with it.
But any kind of working, like I have a question, or I want some more information, I, I don't need to put it on, I, I don't find, since I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not a city of Kingsbury.
Yeah, but emails are not.
Well, the thing is.
Are not part of.
If.
Okay, thanks with.
To me, they're, we don't deliberate, and we sure as hell don't vote on the email, on email.
Right, but I should be able, but anybody should be able to ask for clarification, agree with your, you know, like requirements or.
But, like I said, if we start conversing amongst ourselves, that somebody could construe that to be actually a public meeting, because that's what this is, a public meeting, that's hidden from the public. Because they can't access the emails and conversations.
Oh, but they totally could, they'd have the market's requests, because it would still be, it would still be viral.
If we can, if we can, if we continue to do what we're doing and rely on requests from open records, or open records, that would be fine, you know, I just, I just don't want to get in a jam with it.
I would love to have some sort of.
Yeah, with open records, and they can, you know, they get all of your emails and all of your text messages and, you know.
Well, if y'all are okay with just pursuing that, I mean, looking at it from that point of view and saying, that's what we'll do.
I, I'm just gonna tell you right now that, that there's so many, I'm the only one on the committee that uses message board, that I know of.
Do you ever look at the message board?
Yeah, I used it once, and I never got any response, so I don't even believe that I sent anything right there. I don't know.
In reference as a anonymous, yeah, or guest.
Well, I even read those.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I read them, but I don't, I, I don't know, other than you, and, and y'all, I don't know of anyone else, and particularly any of the other committee members. And I'll be honest, if I have something that I want to ask for clarification, or, or, I'm gonna use the emails of my fellow committee members to go, hey, what about the, oh, here the meeting draft, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna conduct our business that way, because that's the most efficient way. I have no problem putting, again, once we finalize things, we all put it up on, on, on there.
Exactly. It's, it's basically, it's open discussion.
But.
But.
Yeah, I think, I think it wouldn't be, I think it would hurt to investigate other means that would be.
Some other message board.
Well, or, or if there's a way to do, you know, emails that are.
Accessible to the public.
Right, yeah.
You could, you could create an archive folder with that message board of all communication correspondence, bam, upload all your emails, and you're done. It's all there in the message board.
You can do that.
Open that. Do that.
We could do that. I'm okay with, I'd love that. I think that'd be fine, as long as we're putting it on to the message board.
But I'm not the facilitator or the administrator of, of that, so I'm not gonna volunteer myself for additional responsibilities.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if some emails, I mean, if they have attachments or whatever, they're not gonna, they're not gonna.
The message board, when it didn't.
Yeah.
Well, then that's.
But it's something to investigate, though.
Then isn't it, but it's, that's what they can come back and say. If, we don't have to show it, well, I was gonna say, we don't have to show Lockhart does. They show every page of that.
Yeah.
You know, all of those steps, everything, and it's, okay, that's a lot of work, mine. And it's easier, like I said, if we could just put it on the message board and say, here, oh, this one doesn't want to open, I can't open that attachment, would you like to make it open records, question, be glad, or do we have to, we'll just ask for it, we'll send it to you. Okay, I'll have to email it to you.
Lockhart, I guess even the volunteers get paid there.
The what?
The volunteers, yeah, probably get paid there.
It's a different.
Something that actually, on the, the city's server, it has a city Lockhart.
Yeah. Something you said reminded me of something I need to mention right now.
What is?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Something that we all do.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever you all said.
Yeah. I, I think we can, you know, just take a, a look and see what our options are there.
Okay, just fine.
Yeah, I think it's definitely something we need to look into. I mean, we, we use the message board, it's not really as a tool, it's just a C Y A.
Yes, exactly.
You know, and, but it would be nice to have an actual helpful tool.
Yeah. Well, if we think that.
What other cities use? What other cities use? I don't have, I don't have point contact, so the city, but maybe, maybe.
It all comes, it all comes off of their, their essentially message board.
Yeah, but I mean, what type of message board are they using? Do they have the same problems? Do they have the same challenges?
There are.
What are they using?
Yeah, there are better message boards, but they are, you know, cost, and so with Pro Boards, it's free.
Oh, that's, that's the other thing, yeah.
Yeah, that's where we started with Pro Boards, because it was free.
Well, I like free, I really do.
I like free.
It's, it's workaround. If you, I mean, we say, we're gonna look into it, that means you're gonna look into it?
That means I'm gonna look into it.
Okay. I mean, if, if I'm on that list, make sure you tell me.
Okay.
What I'm supposed to be doing.
Okay. Um, anything else? Anything else, public comments? All right. Under Old Business, item number three, consent agenda items, the approval of November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, regular commission meeting minutes. Any Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to think of the word for, changes or additions to the meeting minutes from November twentieth.
I don't have any.
I have a question. Where are the November twenty meeting minutes?
They are.
They come to us an email.
They go, but they are also, they should be posted on.
Well, they won't post it till you sign.
Oh, until they're signed.
Yeah, so they get signed at the next meeting, the next month's meeting.
Okay, so there's a lag. Okay, thanks. Okay, that's what I, I was like, where are the meeting minutes? I looked on the message board, I'm like, I don't, that was.
A lot of times, on the, on the agenda, the agenda list, it, it was the agenda, maybe a notice, it also had the minutes included in it. Sometimes it's not labeled with minutes, I think.
Yeah, there's a page that's the city commission schedule and agendas, and I, I posted to that page.
Not the, not the message board, the city, the city, city dot org.
I mean, it's on the website, yeah.
Yeah, our website.
Oh, on the website.
If you go under the government tab, and then you'll see.
Schedules and agendas, or?
Yeah, twenty twenty-three, I need to make the twenty twenty-four page.
And there'll be a, a posting of agenda or notice, and it used to be column, I thought it said minutes, but I'm making.
It says documents, I think.
Yeah, I've done a little bit of, like, going to the discussion board and saying, you can find this on that page, because it does feel a little confusing, but it's, you know, it feels a little confusing. But, but they're there.
Uh, so any updates or, or additions to the minutes from November twenty? All right. And those minutes will stand. Item number four, discussing the center, Kingsbury Development Committee Report and Discussion. Yes, sir.
Send the report to commission. We have two items on our agenda mainly, actually. On our last Kingsbury Developing Committee meeting on twelfth of December twenty twenty-three, we decided to tackle the challenge of finding companies to manage our residents' household waste, since we have been let down by the county and our transfer center closed indefinitely in October twenty twenty-three. The idea is to provide large forty-yard container in a fenced area and have residents bring their trash. I did some rough calculations on my own, knowing that the post-oak landfill is charging fifty-three dollars per ton for household trash. And in considering three dollars per mile for transportation, I learned very fast that transportation is closer to ten dollar per mile. Therefore, I gave rapidly up unless the city of Kingsbury owns a semi-truck and containers, we rapidly would face up to six hundred dollars per container to ship it to the landfill. I am currently speaking actively to Mr. Travis Davis, the owner of Superior Disposal in Luling. He submitted prices this afternoon, provided, we provide a suitable property for three forty cubic yard containers for household trash, plastic, and clean folded cardboard. Eventually, one more for metal if there is space on that property. I explained that this property will be fenced and have regular opening times we would come up with, and every resident delivering his trash will be supervised in order to assure that no mixed trash will end up in the reciting center. Prices are as following: For forty-yard container up to four tons in there, he would charge four hundred and ninety-five dollars per dump. An additional sixty-three dollars per additional ton in those containers.
And this is which landfill?
This is Superior, I don't know. This, this is, yeah, this will probably, will go to the landfill, because this is household trash. They will not bring this to Luling, since Luling is not taking any household trash, only you can bring your bottles, plastic bottles there. So this is probably going to the post-oak dump, I assume, because this is the closest one. He is charging us four hundred and ninety-five dollars per container unless it has more than four tons in it. For forty-yard container of plastic, which are plastic number one and two, these are those soda bottles, bottles where you have your dish soap in and it says, actually, it should say on the bottle, what plastic is number one and number two, and we need to be very specific on that, because Mr. Davis is complaining that from the old transfer center, it always was mixed in there, so this is a problem that mixed trash is handing up. He's charging a hundred fifty dollars per container. Then a forty-yard container of clean cardboard, which has to be folded in order to get as much as possible, and another one hundred fifty dollars. I think those prices are super. The reciting center itself from Superior Disposal is located in Luling, four five six zero Salt Flat Road, and they welcome to deliver in person weekdays between eight and five P M. Prices can be looked up on the internet, but I tell in advance, they do not take any household trash, so you are screwed with your household trash where to put it. Since all of this info is about two hours old, yeah, now it's three hours old, I was unable to convey this Merry Christmas info to the Developing Committee, because Elena asked for it, but I will provide detailed information in upcoming emails. Number two, make Kingsbury. Make Kingsbury attractive for residents is another task of us. Words like street festivals, rainwater collection, and park are one on everybody's lips, and we are currently working on that, foreseeing sure legal problems will try, we will try to avoid. The upcoming Hot Chocolate Social is one of those festivals. Right now, it seems we are not sure if we should hold the date of January thirteenth. Committee wants to use this event to set up a booth and inform residents actively about leaving Seguin's E T J and introduce us as the committee to the residents. Since time is flying and planned mailers and flyers are maybe in print or not even yet, we doubt that this date is doable or suitable. Action is required tonight. I suggest to maybe contact Pat Baker, which is maybe what I heard earlier about the property not necessary, to ask to utilize part of his property for a while, just to figure out how this trash transportation for us would work. Uh, it might be a flop, and we don't want to embarrass ourselves. Yet, we have a good chance to show that our city is well capable of showing independence. Maybe we can even reopen our transfer center on Highway twenty-four thirty-eight, pay rent to whoever owns it. I would volunteer to sit there for the first three months without any charge, just to figure out if the trouble is all worth it. The income access would go to the City of Kingsbury. My rest.
I will, I will say that, um, if you watch the minutes for the Guadalupe County Commissioners Board regarding the transfer stations, there's one in Kingsbury, of course, and then there's one in Marion. Um, they had, of course, just the one, uh, submitter for the R F P for the trash, for running these stations. Uh, it was Waste Connections. They, Waste Connections on their R F P did not include anything for running the transfer stations. It's basically running the, the landfill on Kohlenberg Road.
I would not run it for the county, I would run it for the City of Kingsbury.
Right, right, so, but it did not include that, it's just running the landfill on, on Kohlenberg. You know, up on, was that eleven oh one, eleven oh one in Kohlenberg? Yeah.
It's, it's just.
So, and that contract is for sixty months, so for five years, we're looking at no station there. Uh, the.
If the City of Kingsbury rents that property, this is perfect access, we just need three containers where you can drive up with your car and dump your stuff in there, and I will supervise that. Seriously, only that what goes in that dumpster is going in that dumpster. I do it for the first three months. And then, of course, the City of Kingsbury has to pay the owner, whoever owns that property then.
Looking at that right now, just.
Pay, pay five hundred bucks right now, we are getting nothing. Transfer the electricity over, and we open that thing on the first of January, I mean.
I, I think it's a, an amazing idea, I actually am, uh, just kind of going into the next thing, number five, but, um, uh, so I've been doing some digging, I did talk to my friend Joaquin from, uh, Circle Acres in Austin. He set up the recycling program in Austin, and then, um, and then also did, uh, another waste management thing, bringing up, uh, a toxic site up to, made it into a public park over there. Um, so he sent, uh, me a ton of info, there's a bunch of grants you can actually get to set up recycling systems. He can help us, uh, if we want to set up something, um, there's ways to rent trailers, um, actually, and Tyler maybe called?
He emailed about, uh, somebody who's selling a.
A recycling trailer, which has the bins on it.
Yeah.
And, um, he can help us, so at the very least, the recycling, he can help us take care of.
Those bins are maximum eight yards big, uh, this is for twenty, thirty trash bags.
And, and the one thing I wanted to mention is that with that contract with Waste Connections for the county, it includes, they, they talked a lot, none of the commissioners were happy about the contract. But, and none of them ever mentioned anything about recycling, just the trash part of it, so, yeah, recycling was just not on the radar at all.
I mean, if, if the, if the residents do not want to recycle, they can surely put their cardboard and their plastic bottles into the household trash, but this is what costs money.
Yeah.
And I think we should, uh, calculate, yeah.
Have, have waste manage, have, have household trash collections, have them recycle.
Exactly.
Yeah, a real recycle.
A real recycle.
They consider their household trash if they want to, but this is what costs money, what, what do you mean?
Yeah, because the, the household, this is what we charge. The cardboard and the plastic, I would do for free, I would, but the, the hidden cost, one hundred fifty dollars per dumpster, per container, you put into the household trash. So you most likely need to make a thousand dollars out of the household trash container in order to cover the cost for the other two containers, which are three hundred, the five hundred for the container which is full, and have a little leftover.
Yeah, that piece of property, you're gonna buy oil for the county.
It's ill.
And when the recycling, when the transfer station was open, I was, once a week, I was taking recycling, and it was like two bucks per carload, which I would, I was happy for that. I, I overpaid quite a lot. Uh, so, yeah, the, I think for recycling to pay, because you can get recycling through curbside trash, but it's, it's a fairly significant amount, from, from what I understand, I haven't looked at the prices myself, but that's what I understand.
And we, we all saw fast horse dumpsters full on twenty-four thirty-eight. Uh, like I said, he's charging four hundred ninety-five per container. The plastic and dump, the, the cardboard container, it took usually ten to fourteen days to fill. I was watching Stacy, I did that very carefully, I saw that, I watched that. And I think we can cover that very easily and make some money for the city out of it.
Now, yeah, do you think it's possible, please get the county to rent it to us instead?
They're not doing anything with it?
Yeah.
Right now, it's, it's bad.
It's hard to ask, huh?
But we're not talking about, not certain size they're using up there now, right?
Yes, forty yards, exactly.
Are those forty yards?
Yeah, those are forty yard dumpsters. And when this property you acquire here for the city, at this point, we would need a scaffolding. I would be in need to build a scaffolding in my shop, but then you are running into those legal problems, because that scaffolding has to be approved by OSHA, and we all know that. Unless you buy one, you can buy them, but they are expensive. But Elena said last week, we are going to open up the account and get some money out of y'all.
Yeah, I know, I don't, I would not, uh, want to put, uh,
A proposal?
Uh, trash dumpsters there, right there by people's houses, yeah, forty yards.
The, the proposal from Travis Davis is still cheaper than purchasing an own semi truck, have a driver, I mean, I have a C D L, I spoke to, to Blake, but he's, his information is like, it's outrageous. Um, we can move that truck, but then you need at least three dumpsters, and you will not get a dumpster under two and a half, three thousand dollars even used than the semi truck, ten, fifteen thousand, so you're spending twenty-five thousand dollars before you even move. So I would, I would not recommend.
Deborah allowed, Deborah to listen, let us take it to those folks.
Yes.
And that would be affordable.
This, this is what, yeah, when we own that, that semi truck, then you pay fifty-three dollars per ton and calculated, uh, you might, the four tons is tight, what, uh, the proposal from Travis Davis. I think you end up four and a half to five thou, yeah, kilograms, five tons in a container, um, but times fifty-three at live oak. But then you still, you have the truck, you have the insurance for the truck, you have maintenance for the truck, you have to have a driver, that driver is not driving for free, the gasoline. Uh, four ninety-five is a, is a heck of a deal.
Now, may I ask, is the collection rate, the rate for using our dump, our collection system, uh, is that for Kingsbury residents?
It's up to us, I mean, here right now, we are talking about maybe making money for the city.
Yeah.
And, uh, when we can make two, three, five hundred bucks a month in extra just by sitting there, hey, be my guest.
But I'm saying, if somebody is not within the city limits, they're in the county, they're incorporated, whatever, they want to use their dump like they used to. Guess what, the prices are gonna be.
More.
A little more.
Can, sure.
Arguably more.
You have to give Kingsbury citizens an incentive to go in.
There is an marketing plan, yes. Thirty-four steps ahead, I think we have a good idea. I would love to reopen twenty-four thirty-eight, because you have all the facilities, you have power, you have a booth, where you can sit in when it is raining or so, but yet, don't do it like Stacy. Get out and, and watch what the people are doing.
Well, there's actually tons that you could do, also it's in there, because they do have woodchipping back in the area, and if you incorporated woodchipping, I mean, if we took it on our own, then you could have your own mulch, and you could even sell it, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of things that could happen.
Exactly, right now, I think we should.
Just the basic, just the basic.
Three dumpsters there, household, plastic, and cardboard, that overview is already, you know, and you need to keep that clean.
Yeah, household, plastic, cardboard, and I bring fours, twenty-two inch rail, rim, auto wheels.
Yeah, none of them take tires, nobody takes.
No washers, no dryers, no water heaters, no corners. You gotta go take it to the Landgo, you can't bring it to the Kingsbury.
The contract with Waste Connections, there's, it lasts for these certain number of amnesty days where there is bulk item pickup. But even then, it does not include tires. So nobody, nobody, no landfill, no transfer station takes tires.
All right.
But they do, they, there are these amnesty days, and I don't know exactly when those are, what they're scheduled, but that is to be for bulk items.
I used to take bulk items, mattresses, metal, scrap metal, and, uh, they didn't pay me for it, but it wasn't enough, drive to the city later. Um, I think what else? Full toilets, porcelain, clay, and it's, nothing was.
I'm wondering, um, for the committee, does the committee have any, uh, is there any understanding or idea about, um, how to make the proposal to the county for, for possibly leasing that land or utilizing it, is there any?
I'll call, I'll call.
Or is it, they know the process?
Feel it out, see what.
You should talk to them.
I think we should, well, okay, because, um, I have, we should talk about the recycling program, because there's a lot of links that also could help us with getting it with the county, because I think there's state incentives as well. Um, so if we go that direction, they might even help us, you know.
Uh, but, yeah, I mean, we can, I can, we can at least call and see if it's, you know, get a.
Provide, provide me a telephone number, and I will make calls, because I don't take a no for answer.
They take tires that have been cut or shredded.
Oh, I'm not sure how you would do that.
I don't know how you would do that.
Yes, yes, yeah. I worked on a machine, I made this one's a machine like that, it was a big shredder, shreds up the tiles.
Yeah, you have to.
And the, the plus is actually, you can really do something with tiles.
Yes, that's.
Oh my God, landscaping, and just a little plastic.
Build roads, replace, build, build asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, I, I thank you for your, all your research, which is good.
Yeah.
From the town of East Management, and.
You put that on me, huh?
I know, and I, and I, well, I'm thanking you for that.
I did a German job, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'm looking forward to, to getting the, the, your, your notes on it, and then that way we can continue moving forward and, and hopefully the, the commissioners will, will, will varnish on it and come and get back with us.
Since my computer program is not auto correcting, I need to let Deborah check on that and read that, and once this is all without any mistakes, I will.
Sounds good to me, thank you, thank you so much, you know.
It was an honor, thank you.
So is it, is it okay if I call, like, the judge and Sign Burger? Okay, just, yeah, get a, get a little feel for it.
Now, would you be offended if he says, you know, we don't have to do that here?
Trash.
Okay.
I know.
Sure, no, I don't.
Okay.
Well, it would be.
I'll, I'll be sure to follow up with you in January's meeting, so we find out what happened.
Yeah, I'll call him, I'll call him, see what, you know, I'll call, Sign Burger and/or the judge.
Well, this is, this is very exciting.
I like these.
And I, I even like the idea about that property here in, in, where is the road section?
Summit, Kingsbury Summit.
Well, that could be for the water, you know, the water plant.
Yeah, yeah, it would be, yeah. All they want, come on, Jesus, it would be, you got water there, you got waste. If you can just put three dumpsters there, you have to have access with a semi truck.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, thank you. Any further information from the K D C?
I know, we'll just follow up with you next month, or in the coming weeks, before, before next month's meeting regarding, uh, regarding that.
All right, so this is include both four and five here?
No, five, five is, is, uh, a minute or ten.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, um.
Item number five, uh, Discuss and Consider Plans for a Possible Kingsbury Recycling Program.
Yes, so, uh, this is fabulous that you brought this up, because, um, I'm gonna read you the email that I got from Joaquin Mariel, who, you know, like I said, has been, uh, involved with doing a recycling program in, um, in Austin. Uh, he said, to start with, I'm super excited that you all are considering getting a recycling program going on in light of the transfer station closure. There are a few different ways that you could approach it. Start a community drop-off center, if there's publicly owned land and paved land available in Kingsbury that the city would be willing to dedicate towards this use. The permitting process with T C E Q is very easy, and I would be happy to help with the design and layout for how this could look. Depending on volumes collected, you could have some very basic equipment at this site to bail and store material, and then actually sell it to a recycler in the area, rather than pay for it, which sounds better to me. Um, some of the challenges here are available space in this type of facility, which, again, the transfer station, um, would need to be staffed to a certain degree. But, yeah. Uh, and then he said, uh, the second option is to start a small transfer operation. Same as above, but you would install a compactor that would feed walking floor, uh, that would feed walking floor trailers to send mixed material to a recycler. Uh, the same challenges would apply here, it's above, all those staffing would be less intensive, so I think that might be what they had at, at the dump, the Kingsbury dump. But I don't like that system, because it just seems like they probably just throw that into the ocean, like, you know, it just gets, it just gets contaminated, there's all type, people just throw anything in there.
They will, that is, that is a common problem with recycling everywhere.
Yeah.
Is that there.
The sorting is the issue.
It's the sorting and the state. So people will throw their cardboard pizza boxes in there, but actually, that's not acceptable because of the grease.
Yeah.
In it, from what I understand. So, uh, it's, it's, and then people will throw all kinds of plastic, e- even if it's not a one or.
You be sure, I would watch, I would watch.
Yes, Udo there.
Yeah.
So yeah, that first option sounds very good, and then, uh, the third is private collection, which is probably, yeah, uh, depending on the number of potential subscribers, you could approach the private market and institute a curbside collection program. Um, the challenge here is, is in potential volumes, volumes collected, and whether or not you would have enough users to entice, uh, a private haul to come to your community. So, yeah, again, sounding like the first one. They do, and they charge you for it.
Well, of course.
Fifteen dollars. So I like the first one, we'd make money. And, and you, I think you could incite Kingsbury people to be like, make sure you only put these things in, this makes money for the city. You want, you want no taxes, let's keep it that way, let's make some money for the city with putting your plastic in our bin.
That always sounds good on paper, yeah, listen, the problem is you have a transportation. And my calculation, I thought, oh, I'm, I'm getting it back, yeah, what would you charge me to bring my forty from here to Bronfes? Five hundred dollars, for two, for two and a half hour long trip. I'm like, where's that, where's that number coming from? So then I, you make different costs, you can call friends in the neighborhood there, they, they might do it cheaper for five and six dollars per mile, but before you really make anything out of it, the driver has to come to the facility, he's charging you, he's charging to load that container, bringing it away, bringing it back, unloading, and driving home. This rapidly, fifty miles he is driving, maybe even more, times five, huh? It's what you pay for the dumpster. You pay two hundred fifty dollars, but you get a hundred, so you're still losing money.
Yeah.
I'd rather pay a hundred fifty and have nothing to do with it.
Okay, well, I mean, we should, we should look and figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, options that we have excluded.
Um, but I do want to keep reading this email, because there's other things to it. Uh, there are a lot of grant programs available to small communities to help build and support recycling programs. Uh, he's listed a bunch. Uh, two that he's directly familiar with, uh, one is the Keep Texas Beautiful Grant, um, it's a recycling grant, uh, for recycling programs and processors, so that, you know, is something we could apply for. Um, uh, he also works with a recycling company based out of Austin, Texas, they're in the process.
Those would, if, I'm sure they're all different kinds, is that like a one-time grant or a?
I'm, I'm looking it up now.
Okay.
Keep, keep it figuring out.
Okay, um, like, there's a bunch of them. Um, we are in the process of building a new materials recovery facility in San Antonio that will be open in April of next year that is designed to receive mixed material from communities like Kingsbury, so I'd be interested in figuring out whether or not there is something we could do in partnership to help get your program going. Um, and then there's, there's his website, which is Balcony's Resources, Sustainable Futures Through Recycling. Um, and then, he said, if y'all are interested, I would love the opportunity to come down and learn more about, uh, what it is you're trying to achieve. Um, I've reached out to him and invited him to this, but, you know, it's kind of the holidays, so I haven't heard back anything, um, but, uh, but then again, for when we talk about the flyer, it, it might be cool to get him down for that, whenever that date, when we ever decide that date. But, yeah, so that's my report. Um, so, yeah, sounds like there's options, and especially coupling with this idea of the transfer station.
So, out of that, are you gonna take any action items out of that to, to get some clarification or?
Yes, well, I've been trying to get in touch with Joaquin, I mean, I've texted him twice and. Yes, well, I've been trying to get in touch with Joaquin, I mean, I've texted him twice and emailed him twice, um, in the past two weeks, and I have not heard anything yet.
Okay.
Um, so, I guess next action item, if we don't hear back, I'll pursue the grants and take a look at them and what, what it will entail.
Because, I mean, it sounds like there's several things there that gets added to our list of, of options, you know, for, you know, transfer station. Yes, sir?
The county transfer, I know it's closed, but I've heard talk back and forth they're reopening.
No, they're not.
Yeah, I didn't, I thought I was hearing about this, yeah.
Sadly.
Sadly, yeah.
Hoped for, but not.
Yeah, yeah, so if we could, uh, yeah, so I can, um, uh, look into these, these options, and, um, I'll try calling him after the holidays, probably after the new year, um, and just see if we can talk to him about, especially about his program, because if he's opening something in April, you know, and we can, that's probably as soon as we'd be able to figure something out anyway. Maybe they could come to us, and be our drivers for the recycling part at least, and then we just have to figure out the.
Some.
Yeah. I mean, he's interested, he's.
I mean, I'll think, uh, you know, even a break even would be.
Break even would be fine, but.
Certainly make money would be better, but.
If we have, if we have an employee, even one employee, break even is gonna be a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
But you know.
Well, I mean, you can limit the, the dates, between others.
Yeah, but you probably, it's also a pretty short part-time job, you know? Occasionally, come in, what, what, what's your schedule, it was occasionally on Mondays, sometimes it was a Thursday.
Yeah.
And you have to be really mean, as most kind of miss.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about the potential of a recycling center in Kingsbury.
I think so too.
And I'm really excited that you're talking to Joaquin of College Action out of Austin.
Yeah.
That's enormous, it's over nearly thirty years worth of experience he has actively working in Austin alone for their recycling.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think he comes up with some really great options, and I'd love to see what happens through that, so if the committee or I can be of any help, let, let us know. I know you're working with Tyler, part of it as well, so I, I'd kind of let that be his.
Yeah.
I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, so, you know, I just wanna let you know that we've supported it.
The more the earlier, you know? I mean, it'd be so cool to get some going.
Oh, it'd be.
Curiosity means, uh, Austin, that you have that San Antonio market.
So, um, so Joaquin, uh, set up something, he set up the re, original recycling program in Austin, and then they later took his model, and then they incorporated an actual city program that paid for it by taxpayers.
And money-wise, as far as employees and everything, two totally different markets.
Okay, okay, no, no, yeah.
No, but he just, he proved that it could work in Austin, so, and he was making money out of it, and they were like, oh, it's not gonna cost us anything, let's do it ourselves, yes.
That's how I know what Keen is from Austin, because that's how we got started, with the recycling stuff.
But Kingsbury is kind of considered the San Antonio area, I think, you know? As far as people coming out from, you know?
I zip there's Austin, uh, telephone service, used to be by our zip, Austin, our cell service.
Yeah, I get Austin radio stations and Austin television stations where I am.
I get both.
I get both.
I don't get really a station.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm in the five-one-two area, so.
Okay, so you're gonna follow up with the team after.
Yes, after the holidays, and I'll start looking into these grants and see what's involved. Um, but I do recommend, if we're gonna pursue grants, um, maybe we hire a grant writer, and I, we have a few we work with that I could suggest, but, you know, if there's any other ones.
The website that you mentioned, uh, that you mentioned in, in what are the Keep Texas Recycling, KTR, that's actually, uh, I'm looking over their grant page, and they've got a partnership with HEB, um, Keep Texas Beautiful, they've got grants coming out, Texas Parks Wildlife, they've got National Endowment, Capital Plant, I mean, they've got a number of them, so we can maybe spend some time looking. It might, that might be worth spending between now until you talk to Joaquin, just look at what kind of possible grants and their deadlines and their eligibility, kind of get us moving in that direction.
Yeah.
There's quite a bit on there.
Oh, yeah. Right?
All right.
All right, on time, number six, discuss and consider a plan to create a mailer and/or other materials to inform Kingsbury area resident, residents about SB twenty thirty-eight and the available process for removing a property from ETJ.
Yeah, so, uh, well, there, as we discussed at the beginning of the meeting, um, there have been many emails back and forth with people.
I do want to make a comment, um, when I was looking at some of the, I, I get petitions very regular, uh, asking for release from the Seguin ETJ. Uh, when doing the packets for these, I went back and reexamined the, the map that was sent to me by the county that said, hey, these are suspect. What, and I've tried three times to get clarification, including again today, because I finally got an email back today. From what I can understand, the properties in question are the, wait, what, I'm getting it wrong, are the three that we did at, the le, the last three, which is the, the old post office, the empty lot, and the shed behind the old post office, so.
These are, uh, properties that annexed into Kingsbury.
Correct, correct. So when we're trying to get our map, from what I understand, and again, I've asked every time, just, I need clarification on exactly which properties you're talking about. And it's from, when you look, everything is in kind of the shades of blue, but then, in the wording, he says something about the outline and turquoise. The only items outlined in turquoise are those three properties, so. I have not put together packets for other properties that are in, that we have, uh, previously annexed.
Anexed by voluntary.
I'm not, including like your property, uh, because those, I believe, are not in this, uh, uh, group that.
The county's.
Yeah, that the county had some kind of problem with, where they wouldn't get us mapped. Uh, so I believe it is just those, simply those three properties.
All the stuff that is in.
Then I got one hundred percent okay, uh, to go ahead and, uh, do those with, uh, voluntary annexation, um, but then got the one eighty on that after. So, uh, uh, so I have not submitted in any forms I have gotten that are not, uh, that are already in Kingsbury, or already, um, have been, you know, voluntary annexed. Um, and then I've gotten a couple that are already in Kingsbury ETJ, they're not Seguin ETJ.
But there's, are there clarification on whether the third?
That, that's, again, I tried again today. And, so I did submit five packets today to, uh, City of Seguin, uh, for properties that are in the.
That are pulling out of the, of the Seguin ETJ?
Yeah, these are all for release from a Seguin ETJ. So, um, and I've gotten another couple that I have to, uh, research, and now I've learned, as I've gone through this, I've learned, uh, to, uh, just verify that this is a property that is actually in the Seguin ETJ and not in our ETJ or, and that is not part of, uh, a, uh, that has already been, uh, yeah, annexed and is not considered in these, uh, disputed properties. Apparently the disputed properties are only those three.
I'm so confused by the whole thing.
I know, it is.
So much, I was so low, but sorry.
Did, did you ask him who's disputing?
Uh, the engineer for Guadalupe County Road and Bridge.
Did you ask, have you spoken with him and asked him?
No, I have, I have.
What is the dispute?
That, that we needed approval from Seguin to get our maps, because, because they are.
He says they're in Seguin ETJ?
It was the quote higher-ups, I, I got this from, not the chief engineer, but the engineer with, uh, yeah, has to do with the maps, mapping for Guadalupe County. The higher-ups needed approval from Seguin for us to get our maps.
Did you tell them to call Seguin and get approval?
I did.
No, what'd they say?
Seguin said, that would put us in a precarious position, even though Seguin gave me specific approval to do those three properties.
Okay.
But then, when we came down to it, then they said, I don't know, it would be, uh, would put us in precarious positions. So, then SB twenty thirty-eight came along, those properties are no longer in the Seguin ETJ. So it's a moot point at this point.
Why are they no longer in the Seguin ETJ?
Yes, yes, identity request.
She petitioned them out.
Now, according to the email that I got just today, uh, we may need to annex them again to get them back into Kingsbury. So all the properties that.
Oh, because they were.
But we can still get out of Seguin ETJ, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, but you haven't submitted ours yet.
But, no, because I believe they do not need to be submitted, because the only properties that are in what dispute are those three downtown, which have now since been removed from ETJ. So other packets, other requests for removal from Seguin ETJ that I've gotten, that are already been annexed, are not in question. And that's why I continue to go back and make, just make sure I'm getting clarification that those three properties are the only ones that are in question.
The prior, the prior annexations were done openly and publicly, and they did not contest it. They didn't say.
They did not.
Involuntary.
Seguin, Seguin said nothing, they did not contest it, they just say, hey, what are you doing?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have to go through that all that again, but I'm just saying what was in the email today.
I mean, I guess the thing that makes me wonder is that, looking at that map of the Seguin ETJ, um, you know, we could so specifically see like, oh, there's me and Tyler's property, you know, like, the, the little boxes out of it, so why aren't there little boxes out of it for, I mean, for Allison's place, or, you know, like, why?
Those actually show.
They do show.
Uh, in Kingsbury.
Because they were, when they were annexed, it is Kingsbury.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The City of Seguin didn't say anything about it, they didn't complain, they didn't throw a fit, they didn't come, come in.
It's very strange.
I'm really trying to follow you.
So we're probably not in Seguin ETJ.
Yes, no, no, you're not, you're in a different ETJ.
I believe not, again, I keep requesting clarification that it's only those three properties.
Because you were the last three in, and, and you asked for, they're okay, you know?
And they said yes.
And they said yes, they didn't, they didn't.
It was not in writing.
Right.
So when I asked for it in writing, that's when I got the one eighty.
So it's like they're just screwing with us.
Pretty much, and then the county is kind of going along with it, so.
And it's like, all, all we need is.
But now we have SB twenty thirty-eight, so it's a moot point.
Yeah.
So, but so I, I just.
But to go back to, to discussion six, it's about educating the twenty thirty-eight.
Correct.
I, I feel like he just kind of took his way on the left course here, because I'm truly trying to figure out, I understand that that's moot point, but that was already established.
No, no, it was not. It's, there are a number of properties that we have done that we had understood, they were back in Seguin ETJ. But apparently, from which you, if you read what I got from the county specifically, they actually are not, they are not the ones being contested. All the voluntary annexations that we've done, those are not being contested, it's only those two, so.
Other properties.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, okay, so, but, but, but you know how hard to get over that with SB twenty thirty-eight?
I just, I just, I just, I just wanna make sure that the other properties that are.
We had previously.
Previously annexed that were in the Seguin ETJ are not part of this contested question.
That was one of the purposes of the mailer that you had talked about, was to inform.
Right.
The people whose annexations have been put into question.
Right.
That that is happening.
Just those few properties.
Yeah, just the, it turns out, it's just those three, so all the other properties, which is a fairly good number.
Yes.
Are not actually in question.
Okay, they're showing up on the map.
They're, they're on the map, y'all are on the map.
Already accepted by a county official.
Yes.
And it was before Seguin realized that they lost their pull, and the county, excuse me, did I say such things without.
So, I just want you to get, I want you to let us know. The latest on that first, correct.
So you filed for release from their ETJ?
Oh, we did.
And, and then, and so we're good, you're good, that property is gonna be.
Those three are will eventually be.
They think, they think you might need to read, they think, what it said?
Yeah.
We don't think we have to, we don't need to.
Don't have our lawyer, we've got to deal lawyer movement in terms of following the dates.
The county engineer to tell us, you know?
We've already, we've already, we've already granted petition, we've already granted petition, what, what?
Yeah.
Well, it is now.
It is now.
Okay.
All right, so, moving on.
Moving on, I just wanted to give you a lesson.
So, um, there have been a lot, there have been a lot of emails about, uh, the mailer and a lot of ideas, um, and I think that there's some pretty good slogans and wording. Um, I guess what we need to kind of decide is, do we move it to February and do kind of a Valentine's Day hot chocolate thing? So that we can maybe get some speakers in, I think, uh, Elena, uh, maybe somebody, there's some videos about like, what is an ETJ, like some, just kind of explain to people.
So with the emails, if, if I may, I did, I did send, um, a link from the Texas City Limits Coalition that talks about what is an ETJ, that's a nice little, little, very good little video that they put together. That would be really nice to show our residents at the event. Um, there's also, um, James Quintero, who's the Director of Policy at Texas Public Policy Foundation. Let me put a disclaimer, for both those organizations, I'm not endorsing, they're both nonprofits, and they're both conservative big tanks, so I don't agree with everything, but they do have a particular, I wanna make that disclaimer clear. They have some really good education, highly educated, and, and documented research to help with, uh, everyday folks understand what an ETJ is. Um, and can also help with explaining, uh, now that Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight has come out. So I thought of that as a potential speaker, a third guest speaker potentially would be the Guadalupe County Sheriff, uh, Mr. Arnold Zawiki. Now, he, or however he pronounces his name, he is not going to be running for reelection, but he is promoting his deputy, uh, sheriff to, to take his place. I attended last month their presentation at the Independent Cattlemen's Association in, uh, Seguin, at the Seguin Cattie Company, the auction lot. And they did a really great presentation on the population growth over the past twenty years.
Whoa.
And so I just thought, and the relevance of what that comes with, crime, traffic, you know, and, and how it all, under the elite law enforcement, you know, umbrella that that touches. Um, but then they did it, both the sheriff and deputy sheriff were there, and they did a really, uh, really good presentation, and it might be something a little eye-opening for, uh, for us to see their, their, their graphics and their data of the population growth in Guadalupe County over the last twenty years, including, uh, the, the dynamics and trends of crime over the past twenty years, and kind of, you can see a little bit of trend. Uh, so I thought it was very fascinating, so I thought that is also a potential opportunity. If we, if, if the idea is, if we can push it beyond past January, that gives us time to kind of coordinate those things. Additionally, it would also give us a little bit good time to ensure that we have a good flyer, marketing, and out timely, so it's just my, just my thought questions, I'll leave that.
Yeah, and I, I thought it would, could it be also nice if we had time, uh, and Tyler's not here, so we can go and told him, ha, ha, hopefully he's watching. Like, we could have a table for a water collection, you know, like, these are things that we could have in our community, or maybe to get Joaquin to do a recycling presentation or something.
Just have more than one thing to do the mailers.
Kind of do it like the booze and peruse, but just, uh, without the booze or peruse, they can peruse the government information.
If you want to draw a crowd on the booze, it's not bad.
Well, we can have hot chocolate and then a little bit of rum.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I guess, I'm, I don't have a problem with not sending a date until you've got your paper, your, your.
Everything coordinated.
Coordinated, yeah. Then it's like, just to drill it out in bits and pieces, or to pull something back, because, oh, that wasn't quite right, and then have scheduled somebody already to come speak or do a presentation, and like I say, I want to be able to get, we're gonna have, it's a massive effort to, to get people's awareness up, and get them interested enough to come to this and get involved, and, uh.
Well, I, I, I could design something, I think there's been a lot of good slogans kind of put. Well, I, I, I could design something, I think there's been a lot of good slogans kind of put out, and we'll have to condense it for the EDGM flyer. I think that the biggest you can do is kind of like, there's such weird sizes, but they're like, like that or something. So you can fit a lot on the front and the back, but, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to, I'll, I'll put something together with some graphics of some sort and send it around. You guys, we'll put it on the message board.
So I will say that the committee did work on that last week to provide some language and verbiage, and so Jessica provided some, I provided some, I'm not sure if the other members did, but I hope so. So that was, that was the idea to help you guys with that language and then figure out.
Is Jessica not already there? Did you not say last week that you will have some people prepared today, like a flyer, you make a layout and provide it tonight?
Uh, well, I sent out that rough draft, and then you did a, a different version, and-
I thought that you said print already?
No, not yet.
Yeah.
No. I mean, Allison was gonna-
We need dates, we need dates, so we can throw some like hot chocolate, if it's gonna be Valentine's Day, we'll make it cute.
I mean, Allison always said she's gonna make it pretty, and-
That's all I heard, and Allison's gonna make it pretty.
But we also started talking about moving back the date, and so-
I was just kind of waiting for confirmation at this meeting, which I think, well, let's try to set it, can we set it?
In addition, in addition to that, there's the other prong of SB twenty thirty-eight, which is petition of five percent of the landholders for an election. I have requested the registered voters from the Guadalupe County Elections Office. That's not a City of Kingsbury thing, that's just, but I think it's something else to pursue, to do a, a swap of, of an area instead of individual properties. So that may be something we want to include, you know?
I mean, I guess sign up sheets, right, because you wouldn't know.
It's a petition, it's just a, it's a petition almost exactly like what we did for incorporation. It's a petition of registered voters.
So Kingsbury.
Okay, so specifically, so that's a thing you need to be-
No, 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 this is a petition for release, for an election, for release from ETJ.
So you can create whatever boundary you want, but then you need a certain percentage of the people living within that boundary.
Right, to, in order to, right, in order to call for an election. And then, of course, an election, you know, the majority of voters win.
That might be something Brad would be interested in.
Yeah, could be.
But yeah, so, well, but I think that's kind of all nitty gritty stuff that will tell them when they get there, or do you want that kind of stuff on the flyer too?
Uh, it could be, you know, no. It could, no, it could be something that's there, it's a petition if you're a registered, if you're a registered voter in this area, the, the petition is for not just release of your property, but for release of the entire area.
And that's at the presentation or on the flyer?
I think, I think-
I think presentation.
Yeah, I think presentation.
I think the flyer just do-
Yeah, it's confusing enough as it is.
The flyer needs to inform and excite and move them to get-
Hot chocolate whiskey.
Right, but I think, I think it's something that can be done there.
I'm waiting for the golden, golden statements of, are you in an ET, you know, what's, what does it entail being in an ETJ, and why do you want out of it?
Yeah.
Or, and then, reverse side of all of that, why you should be in our ETJ, okay? That's a, that's gonna be a smooth move.
Recycling programs and all the good cool stuff that we're gonna offer.
The incentives, the incentives, why should I be in, why should I be in Kingsbury's ETJ? Why should I be in Seguin's City Limits?
Yeah, because there's, that's two different things. The thing of some is just in principle, you know, being under an ETJ of someone ten miles away.
And what, does anybody, just in a quick sense or two, what happens to me if I'm in an ETJ, what am I subject to?
Taxation without representation.
Well, I'm not being taxed, I'm not being taxed.
No, there is no taxation, but there's-
You could also be regulated for, you could be regulated by, by this, whatever, whatever city municipality ETJ you're in, you can be regulated. But without representation by having any vote in their elected officials.
There is a very small amount of regulation and control that the city can have in their ETJ.
I know.
It's mostly a matter of principle.
Yes, that's exactly right.
So, Commissioner, I'd like to get back to your question, I'm looking at the Kingsbury calendar for the month of February, just so you know, February fourteenth falls on Wednesday.
Yeah, on Wednesday, yeah, and it's the eleventh, I mean, we could be like, get your Valentine's Day, and plus, who's gonna want to come to a city thing and learn about government stuff on Valentine's Day? So we could be like, come, you know, let me, let warm your heart on the floor of Valentine's Day.
Love your community, oh, that's a great, I love that, love your community.
Love your community day.
I love Kingsbury day.
I believe that's the same week we had the big freeze two years ago. Hopefully you guys see what I repeated, so-
Well, then we'll all be down here anyway.
Trying to keep warm.
So, when we look at holidays for that day in the month of February, President's Day is a federal state holiday. So the nineteenth offices are closed, banks will be closed, just FYI.
But on the February nineteenth?
February nineteenth, which is Monday. And then, of course, February second is Groundhog Day, I don't know if we want to do anything with that, I kind of like-
Well, like Frank said, the latter dates are sounding better.
Yeah.
You know what, if we do it February, I'd like it, I'd like it to be after the ninth, I'd like this to get in the twelfth and the nineteenth committee and commission meetings. I mean, if there's any loose ends, anything else, we can tag it up, tie it up, tuck it in right there, I mean, that's our last, our meeting.
So you're thinking the twelfth, or?
No, the twelfth is a committee meeting, and the nineteenth is our commission meeting. And I'd like, I'd like to have a final commission meeting.
Before we have this meeting.
Before we have this.
Well, I am out of town from the twentieth until the end of February.
Can we look at March? That's, that's up to y'all now, I'm, I'm just-
Well, how urgent is it, there's two lawsuits against this bill now.
Yeah, but I, I, I think City of, City of Lockhart made a little, little progress, but there's still Grand Prairie's out there.
Grand Prairie and Lockhart joined together on that.
Joined together the lawsuit.
Do you think they'll make any?
They're, they're claiming, they're attributing this, or saying this legislation is unconstitutional for the Texas Constitution, I don't know what their specifics are.
So they just want to keep their ETJs, what's the issue?
No, they, they want to fight that release from ETJ law we have now.
They, they, they want, those two cities want to, do not want to comply with-
Right, they want to keep their ETJs.
Just like it was, they want to be able to shape and, and form their future growth and under their thumb, you know, so. And that's, that's all it is.
Yeah.
And it's gonna have to go, I'm sure it'll, if it's, if it's, if they're successful, it'll be appealed, and I'm sure it'll end up against the Supreme Court, and I don't think it's gonna-
Twelve months before we get the intention.
Okay.
Because the document is already full before, before-
So if you guys aren't worried about timing, we could push it to March, or we could, I mean, otherwise, we try to have it before meeting.
Who wants to drink chocolate hot in March?
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, is there anything wrong with that?
Yeah, I mean, tenth or eleventh, yeah, the tenth is a Saturday.
Are we looking in March now?
Now we're back to February.
I, I, as I said, I'm not gonna go with March, February, or at least until after our commission meeting, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not this group, so that's just my, my opinion. I'm gonna go with whatever y'all end up.
Well, I mean, it's the eighteenth today, I could get that flyer figured out, you know, this week, and send it around for people to look at, you know? Get it off to the printers for the, by the first of the year, well, okay, so let's actually think about this, so, can, how long do printers take, two weeks or less?
Don't know yet.
How, if you get it done in office, do you go over it today?
Most likely.
Yeah?
Look at us, you and Steph and the hot words.
And we're covering basically our, our entire area, right? How much does that roughly cost, around four hundred bucks?
Five hundred.
Um, are we doing an EDGM, or are we doing an envelope thing, a letter? Because if we're doing EDGM, that's every zip, it's everybody in the zip code, and that's, usually it costs, let's see, it's, it costs about three hundred dollars to do everybody in zip code.
Envelope letter?
It's more. Yeah, it's twenty five.
You get postcard rate, I believe.
Yeah, you get postcard rate. So it's a postcard, and we could get it printed.
I'm not, I'm not concerned with really the cost as much as the effectiveness, so, you know, whatever it's gonna take to get people up here, get their attention, get them up here.
Well, what do we, what do we think could be more?
Because that's something you can like, stick on the printer, kind of thing, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's great.
And it goes out to everybody in the zip code, so you don't have to sit around figuring out people's addresses, it just goes out.
You know, if, if you got flyers up, you got your documents up, your flans up, in the middle of January, then February, whatever it can, like fifteenth, whatever.
We sent that date already four, six weeks ago, and nothing happened. If we don't make an appointment now, it's not, nothing's gonna happen anyways again.
Yeah, so let's do the tenth, and we'll get the mailer done and out by the beginning of the year, and we'll-
Put in your tenth.
Yeah, and we'll say something like, love Kingsbury, I guess love your community really is.
Yeah, I like that.
And by the way, I did get the, the release from Seguin ETJ form up on the, on the website.
Is that it? Any dates to take the voting?
Should there be a vote for the same area?
Yeah, so-
No, it wasn't voted on the first time, I don't think, they were just talking about it, like brainstorming, so we'd make it official.
Monetary release for the cards?
Yes, so, yes.
There are no, we haven't had any issues with our petition to be removed, and we, we have had any issues with our petition.
No, we have not, no. And I made a, I made a simple form also, it's the same wording, but it, it's, it's very similar to our, in format, to our voluntary annexation form, so it's easier to understand for people, and it's easier to fill out.
Good job.
And so that's, that's what's available on the website, and those I turned in today, some of both.
Second question, real quick, are, are Seguin giving us the answer back, yes, you're released, or are they just letting it expire?
They are doing it in their city council.
City council, okay, all right.
And so they will send you a, I'm also got the, here's, here's the ones I picked up today from, from Seguin. So they start receiving, and I'll give these back to the landowners.
The twenty thirty-eight and the EDB, I just arbitrarily chose, whatever time, that's a little bit too special. Just because that was, that was, it was just, it was a, it was just a, basically I followed Jessica's path and just filled in a die frame, so that not only we have something, you know, as we were creating the language, drafting the language, so I just, just to let you know that you might want to look at the time, if that's, if that matters, so, for, for, for the, once the date is identified.
I think three to six could be good, what do you guys think?
I felt like it shouldn't be too short or too long, you know? It should be short enough that if you show up in the middle of that time, you get to kind of see the people who came or whatever. And we might have some speakers we're talking about, so, I don't know.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't want it to be too long.
And Dennis brought up budget, we do have to pay for these cards, do we need to vote on that, or is there a budget for mailers and office supplies and stuff?
We have a budget for mailers.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, we have a budget item for mailers.
All right, so then I'll just send the file to you, and you can get it printed. There, I have a bunch of companies' habitable spaces used, but you can do research too.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll probably just ask Shirley, Shirley likes to do.
Yeah, we can figure it out. We're smart people, we can figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, where do all the addresses come from and everything?
Oh, you, you just, you have to fill out a form with the, I can do that part, you can fill out a form at the post office.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. You print them out, and then you take them to the post office.
Yeah, you get them printed, and you take them over there, they have to be a certain size, certain paper weight, and then you gotta, you bundle them by hand.
Yeah, I mean, if we do, like, you know, the Kingsbury zip code, that's gonna include a lot of people that are already, that are not involved in any of it. They're already in Kingsbury or on the other side, so yeah, we'll see.
Yeah. I ask you, Allison, I pulled up the Seguin ETJ map, and so where is your property in here? Wouldn't there be like a little box?
That's what I was wondering, yeah, it doesn't look like it.
Does it?
Because see, we're right down there, so I'm wondering, I think we are not considered. Oh. Yeah, he's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's your property, right?
And that's the official, but that's your, that's our map, is that?
This is the map from the county.
Okay.
The gray is our-
So Seguin doesn't acknowledge it.
I don't know, go down farther.
Well, they didn't contest it either.
No. Uh, no, they don't even know.
This is, all of this that's blue is there.
Yeah, see, and that's not actually correct, because, I mean-
Updated, maybe?
Yeah, it's updated.
They updated it?
Well, they've updated some of it, but that line is not, that's-
Maybe view full details? Oh.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't even include the fire department, where we're sitting now, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of weird, because it, it has our property.
Oh, yeah, that was creepy.
This includes release from ETJ, that's what those are.
See, so we're still in the ETJ, we're still in their ETJ.
I mean, that's what their map is claiming.
Yeah, no, according, yeah, their map.
Is it official or is it not?
I think I want, is there a problem with submitting a paper?
Well, we annexed the property, we granted their petition to become annexed and, we filed, filed it. Seguin didn't complain, they didn't make a statement, they didn't file a lawsuit with it, and the county published the map with those marked off.
This is, yeah, this map here is the map from the county.
That's why I was asking about the map.
Of Kingsbury's ETJ?
Kingsbury, City Limits and Kingsbury ETJ. So.
Wait, it didn't stop the county, it has to be filed with the state?
Yeah, you know, it's just-
May you hurry?
It didn't stop the county, it has to be filed with the state?
No, it does not.
Just the county?
It doesn't even have to be filed with the county, just the county is where we get our maps. All right.
Okay.
So, February tenth, three to six.
Yes.
Mailers.
Sounds great.
Next week or so.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Item number seven, discuss and consider citywide rainwater collection update, do we have an update on that?
Oh, yeah, Tyler said he didn't have anything new to report, and Sam's out sick, so.
Yeah. All right.
We gotta get some grant frames.
Yeah, grant frames. Item number eight, discuss and consider train crossing at Ganderly Road. This is where I have as yet been able, unable to connect directly with Mr. Lockett on this, so I don't have any updates on this one. I will continue.
We have two trains parking now, what was it, five thirty, no, two.
Oh, really, over Ganderly?
And one, one was, one was stopping over the crossing here at the, at your store.
Right, and I, I, I have, we have had several lately that are blocking one, one crossing. I mean, if they're blocking both crossings, there's a problem with the train, because they're blocking the railroad at that point, not just the road.
Yeah, there's a single one.
Right, so if they're blocking the one, I'm hoping that means they're pulled up enough so that they are not blocking Ganderly by a couple of cars.
I never, I never saw two parked, it wasn't me.
Yeah, yeah, that is kind of new.
Unusual, but we had both.
Because at that point, if they're both parked, again, the entire railway is blocked.
Most likely, right.
So there's, there's something else going on there, if that's, there's no reason to, for two trains to stop, you know, one will stop so the other can pass, so there's something, they're, they're having an issue at that point, so. Um-
Ganderly still has broken the train, you know?
They broke?
They actually-
They broke the trains, yeah.
I was surprised when I went through there, it had broken.
Yeah, we, we still, we still need something more than what we have right now. Item number nine, discuss and consider CLFRF money designation.
Well, it seems like you're making progress with the, you know, because that's the ideal, right, is getting the land, so that we have somewhere to put all the stuff we want to do.
Yeah.
Um, that's the dream, so, yeah, I mean, if, you know, we're still looking at, we don't, we have, you know, we have till the end of twenty twenty-four, but, you know, I, I feel like the sooner the better, but you'll- you'll hopefully get an answer soon, so, you know, yeah, what do you think?
Is there a, is that the Summit Street?
Yeah, Summit Street.
Yeah, Summit Street.
I mean, I feel like it's Will, I mean, it's people who know what we're trying to do, pretty much, the neighbors there, so, we will hear.
I, I realized on the, on the paper, on the letters and stuff, that, uh, I had typed, you know, as a signature Will Himmick, but his name is actually William. Uh, so, uh, I had to go back and redo that one. Uh, uh, yes, and there's a couple also other avenues I'm kind of pursuing regarding some other properties, but...
But I think, you know, maybe, maybe we should put a date on this, like, if, if nothing has kind of happened with that, we should reconsider, maybe...
I want us to utilize those funds, because at some point, the, 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 the strings attached, and there are performance measures that are required.
Correct.
So there has to be a plan by the end of twenty twenty-four and then it has to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-five, right?
Yeah.
So you have some...
Or maybe the April of twenty twenty-four, maybe you have, you have to have a plan, but there, sometime in twenty twenty-four, you have to have the plan.
April is coming up.
Yeah, well...
Designate use, uh, by the, designate the use by the end of twenty twenty-four.
But it's not really the end, is it the, I mean, it says to end on here.
I don't know, maybe this is where I wrote this and I thought it was the...
Yeah, I, I, April might have stuck in my head because that was something, one of the past dates, but, yeah.
We should find out maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
So we are still not up against a wall at this point, but we are...
April will be here before we know it.
Yeah, April is here.
I need to, I need to just double check on that.
Um, well, why don't we, why don't we say, let's figure out whether this paper street's gonna happen by February meeting, and if it's not, maybe we should discuss figuring, yeah, switching strategies.
Before, before we become into a tight crunch.
Yeah. All right. Uh, item number ten, discuss and consider possible water leak at Kingsbury Road, Jess, Jessica and I have both, uh, put in reports of this, it's still just like this, like this, uh, never-ending little pool of water there that has created a pretty difficult, uh, but, and they have said, okay, we have, thank you for letting us know, I got that, I emailed, yeah.
I forgot.
Oh, you didn't, um, I did get a thank you for letting us know kind of thing and, and said they are working with, uh, TechStop on that.
Uh, okay.
So...
Would you suggest maybe, were you gonna reach out to TechStop about the potholes?
Um, ye, ye, yeah, but the pot, yeah, you know that, we, I did, I did, because they can't do anything about the pothole if there's water coming up from underneath it, but maybe that, yeah, you're right. I did say that and I filled out it, TechStop regarding pothole.
Right, but then that might push them to...
Yeah.
Push crystal clear, I guess.
Yeah.
Or they could both be like, it's somebody else's problem.
Yeah, pointing, pointing that way. Okay, so I think we can, well, I'll report back anything that I hear, you know, on that, but, uh, we have both, bring them, let them know, yes, sir.
Uh, related issue, um, I'm sorry for being late, I really wanted to hear those report Summit Street, where they did repair it, it appears as if it's leaking again. And the new tenant had that property seventy-five thirty-one, he said that they would report and take care of it, before I had reported and put in new valves, but it appears to be leaking again.
Yeah.
Or at that location.
This is a where, at the, at the shop?
Summit Street.
Summit, oh, okay.
Summit Kingsbury Road, seventy-five thirty-one Kingsbury Road.
Oh, the one that we're looking at?
No, no, Will's property, Summit Street, the rental property, new renters and...
There's a leak there.
A leak there.
They noticed the same as I did before the rain, why do we have water here in the rain, wait a minute, there's more water than where we got rain, and they sent the table and report this time, not me.
That's the house with all the Christmas lights?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the two, the three white trees, the red.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, any, any...
You always certainly want to report any, any leaks and make sure that they're not, you know, because, I mean, uh, uh, back here by the post office, there was a continuous leak that ended up killing, I don't know, fifteen trees or some back there, so you certainly want to make sure...
Call book?
Yeah.
Because I reported, hey, shut up. Since I walk around and see, then I call crystal clear, maybe they do, maybe they don't.
Yeah, our next door neighbor's at the shed like sink into the ground because of a leak that was crystal clear.
And Will just told me, he had on his property, he was like...
Millions of gallons of...
Yeah, it's, I know, it's...